All right, this time I would call the Wednesday, September 19, 2018, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester?
Here.
Mr. Cho?
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin? Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Close enough on the pronunciation? Thank you. Ms. Yutman? Mr. Warmbrun?
Here.
Mr. Welch?
Here. I believe we'd have a quorum and would, at this time, welcome our new member, Adam Roche, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
This time, I will ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I take it I'll have copy of the minutes? Okay, go ahead.
I move that we approve the draft of the July 18, 2018, meeting.
I believe, this time, it can be approved by voice, vote, all in favor of that. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Can we make a note that Ms. Yutman has joined the meeting?
Thank you. Are there any communications?
There were three additional letters received for the case on tonight's agenda, which have been distributed. There were a few extra copies out on the table, and we will address those during the case.
Thank you. Any continued public hearings?
No.
All right, at this time, I would ask anybody that may wish to be heard today in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals to please stand. Do you swear that any testimony you give will be true and accurate to the best of your ability?
No.
At this time, then, I would call for hearing ZBA 2018 C-06, a request for conditional use permit by Lance and Leeson Schideman to allow a duplex dwelling at 610 West Oregon Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, you do. Thank you, and good evening. Lance and Leeson Schideman are two of the three property owners of 610 West Oregon Street and are requesting a conditional use permit to recognize the currently legally conforming duplex as a legally conforming conditional use at 610 West Oregon Street. The structure was determined to be a legally established duplex in 1987, granting the CUP would remove the nonconforming status and allow expansion of the living room of the structure into the existing attic. The Zoning Board of Appeals may vote to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application. This structure has been used as a duplex dwelling since as early as 1940, when it was listed in the Champaign-Urbana City Directory as a duplex. The applicants want to finish the attic to create additional living space to more comfortably accommodate the potential residents of the upstairs dwelling unit. This is a lower and upper duplex configuration. The first floor and basement constitute the lower duplex, and the second floor and the attic constitute the upper duplex. Their request is for a total of four bedrooms, two on the second floor and two on the third floor. The floor plan of the ground floor and the second floor that was included in the application was from a recent appraisal. While the ground floor uses on that appraisal exhibit are still accurate, the second floor is being used as individual bedrooms and not as two bedrooms and a living room. The applicants have now provided a proposed floor plan for the second floor. The proposed third floor plan is still accurate. Lori, could you hand down that? Yes. And Lori is passing out that corrected exhibit now. The subject property contains a two-family dwelling unit and a detached two-car garage and is located on the north side of West Oregon Street between Kohler Avenue and Orchard Street. The primary use of, excuse me, the subject property and the surrounding blocks are all zoned R2, and the primary use of the nine-block area is as single-family homes. There are a significant number of duplexes and apartment buildings. So if you look at the screen in front of you, you'll see that these are all the properties in the area with their current property codes shown on there. This is the only duplex right now on the block face of Oregon Street on either side, from Kohler to Orchard. The rest of the lots, there are either single-family residential; there is also a medium-density apartment building in this block face. So that constitutes approximately 8% of the lots being duplex right now. If one were to look at a larger scale, say, the three-block face area of this block, the block of Oregon to the east and the block of Oregon to the west, there are 35 lots on either side of Oregon Street. And in that three-block face area, there are three duplexes, which is still approximately 9% of the lots being duplexes. And this will become more relevant in a little bit. But I'm showing it here now because I've got a picture to show you. If you look at the entire nine-block area around this lot, there's approximately 121 different lots, and there are 16 duplexes within that nine-block area. This increases the percentage of duplexes to 13%. So if you look at the relative percentage of duplexes against other types of uses, this block is lower than the average of the nine-block area. And if one were to look at the exact same block face, one block north on California Avenue, which you can actually see up here on the screen, you see there's a group home, there's a duplex, there's a duplex, there's a duplex. On the California block face, still a single-block length, that percentage of duplexes jumps up to 29%, because four of the units in that area are duplexes. Yes?
I'm sorry. One bit of clarification.
Sure.
Does that include all duplexes, both the legally conforming and the ones that were grandfathered in in 1987?
They're all still be, yes.
Okay.
Because they're all still being taxed as duplexes.
That's counting both.
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
And if you look one block south, there aren't as many duplexes on the Nevada block face directly to the south, but there are three apartment buildings, including one high-density apartment building. So again, this block that we're talking about on Oregon Street is less duplex-rich than the surrounding area. The zoning, as I said, of this entire nine-block area is R2 Single Family Residential. The primary use is for single-family homes, but there are some duplexes and apartment buildings scattered throughout. There are some group homes, dormitories, fraternities, sororities, and there's one exempt property down further east on Oregon Street. Although the existing structure was determined to be a legally established duplex in 1987, the R2 Zoning District now allows duplexes only with a conditional use permit. Otherwise, a duplex is treated as a nonconforming use. From 1940 to 1979, two-family dwellings were permitted by right in this area. The 1979 zoning amendment rezoned this area from R1 to R2, that downzoning, but it also changed duplexes from a permitted use to a conditional use. So that explains why this property had been operating as a duplex for so long, possibly constructed as a duplex, possibly constructed as a single-family home and converted to a duplex. We don't have records about when an actual conversion took place. Under the Urbana zoning ordinance, nonconforming uses such as the subject property are not permitted to be extended or expanded into any other portion of the building beyond that part of the building currently in such use. If the requested CUP is granted, the duplex use status would be changed from nonconforming to conforming, which would allow the applicants to finish the attic into living space. If the proposed CUP is granted, the existing structure will continue to meet the zoning ordinance's other development criteria. It contains approximately 2,266 square feet of living area. Finishing the attic would create a net additional 554 square feet of living area in the attic, much less than the area of either of the other floors due to the roof slope of the attic. The space would be used for two bedrooms, one on either side of a shared bathroom. The required off-street parking for four vehicles, two vehicles for each dwelling unit, is met by the existing driveway and garage. In response to the concerns expressed at the neighborhood meeting, city staff discussed potential conditions that could be placed on the CUP to address the concerns regarding increased occupancy and parking and considered the following options: limiting the number of cars permitted to park either on the site or on the street, limiting the occupancy and/or limiting the number of bedrooms. Regarding limiting parking, there is currently no mechanism to restrict the number of on-street parking permits that a resident of the West Urbana neighborhood can purchase. Regarding limiting occupancy, although a certificate of occupancy and/or a conditional use permit could specify the maximum number of residents permitted in a dwelling unit, it could be difficult to enforce that condition due to the logistics of determining residents versus visitors, and how many are at the house at any given time, and for what duration and frequency. Regarding the third option of limiting the number of bedrooms, this could be accomplished by specifying the number of bedrooms for the upper dwelling unit in both the certificate of occupancy as well as in the conditional use permit. Enforcement could be through the review of the building plans submitted for the required building permit, inspection of the completed work prior to issuing the certificate of occupancy, and then also during the scheduled systematic inspections conducted by the Building Safety Housing Inspectors for the rental registration program, which this structure would be required to be enrolled in as it is a rental structure. Violation of the number of bedrooms could result in the revocation of the certificate of occupancy and/or the conditional use permit. Staff concluded that limiting the number of bedrooms for the upper dwelling unit would be the most likely to be effective. City staff analyzed the three criteria that are pertinent to a conditional use permit and determined that, first, the requested CUP is conducive to the public convenience because the requested change in the designation from a legally nonconforming duplex to a conditionally permitted duplex is simply intended to formally recognize the longstanding use of the property as a duplex dwelling, which has been recognized by the City of Urbana dating as far back as 1940. The requested expansion is minimal and is contained within the existing footprint of the building. The second criteria, the proposed expansion of the existing duplex dwelling unit will be designed, located, and operated so as not to be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the R2 Zoning District or to the public welfare. If the CUP is granted, the structure would continue to be operated as a duplex, as it has been operated for decades. Both the structure's footprint and maximum occupancy will remain unchanged, and exterior work will be limited to replacing an exterior light and installing a dormer. And I will show the now amended exhibit. See, you see on the screen, the floor plan on the left is the second floor plan with a living room, a kitchen, and two bedrooms. These are the existing stairs coming from the outside to the first floor, to the second floor, excuse me. And then these are the existing stairs going up to the attic. The image on the right is the proposed third-floor plan layout with two bedrooms in the upstairs on either side of a shared bathroom. The stairs would come up here, you'd come to a landing, there would be doors in either of these doorways to provide privacy, and then there would also be doors here on the bathroom to, you know, fully sequester those into two separate bedrooms. And finally, the proposed expansion of the existing duplex dwelling unit conforms to the applicable regulations and preserves the character of the R2 Zoning District. The only significant exterior change is the installation of a dormer, which will not result in a significant change to the essential character of the structure or the R2 district in which it is located, which contains several other duplexes as well as apartment buildings. It is in a neighborhood that contains other duplexes and rental dwellings. The proposed structural expansion will conform to all standards adopted by the Urbana Building Safety Division, as well as the requirements of the Urbana zoning ordinance. The proposal would conform to the general purpose and intent of the R2 Single Family Residence Zoning District, which is stated by the zoning ordinance to provide, quote, "areas for single-family detached dwellings at a low density on lots smaller than the minimum for the R1 district." The R2 district is also intended to provide for a limited proportion of two-family dwellings, which was the exercise that I walked you through with the different areas and the percentages of duplexes that are in those areas. The Zoning Board of Appeals shall determine whether the reasons set forth in the application justify the granting of the conditional use permit. In addition, the Zoning Board of Appeals may also impose such additional conditions and requirements on the operation of the proposed use as are appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to carry out the purposes of the ordinance. As far as public outreach and comment, in addition to personal meetings and communication via the West Urbana Neighborhood Association, listserv, the applicants invited members of the listserv and neighborhood to participate in a public meeting on September 12 at the Urbana Free Library. Seven people attended. The primary concern expressed by many of the attendees included any increase in occupancy, even if those increases are permitted under its current status as a duplex, which is up to four unrelated persons per duplex dwelling unit. The applicants responded by asking if reducing the number of upstairs bedrooms to one would reduce the concerns about occupancy increases. Several attendees responded that any expansion would likely increase occupancy because it would be difficult to enforce that only the bedroom would be used as a sleeping area. Some attendees mentioned that investment in the residential area was encouraging. Other concerns included a potential increase in the number of cars parked on-street. City staff explained that while there are approximately 11 on-street parking spaces on the block of West Oregon from Kohler Street to Orchard Street, only one other, excuse me, only one on-street parking permit has been issued for that block. As of this afternoon, city staff have received three letters of opposition to the proposed CUP application and eight letters of support. Contrary to statements expressed in one of the letters of opposition, the proposed renovations do not require a change in zoning classification or a variance. The summary of findings are listed there in the staff report. Highlights are that the proposed expansion into the attic would add approximately 554 square feet of living area without increasing the structure's overall footprint and, to a large degree, its bulk. The proposed structure would be compliant with all zoning ordinance requirements for height setback, floor area ratio, open space ratio, and off-street parking. The proposed use is conducive to the public convenience because the requested change in designation from a legally nonconforming duplex to a conditionally permitted duplex would not change the use of the property and therefore would not affect neighborhood traffic or the public convenience. And finally, that a meeting for neighbors was held on September 12, 2018. Issues raised included the potential for an increase in occupancy and the number of cars parking on-street. The Zoning Board of Appeals has the following options in this case: to grant the conditional use as submitted, to deny the conditional use as submitted, or grant the conditional use along with any additional conditions and requirements as are appropriate or necessary. Staff recommends approval of the proposed conditional use for the reasons that we articulated in the staff report, including the two conditions that are shown here on the screen: that modifications to the existing structure generally conform with the building plans and elevations in Exhibit D submitted with this application, and that the new structure conforms with all applicable zoning and building safety codes in the city. In addition, if a recommendation for a condition is desired to address occupancy concerns, that the first condition could be modified to end with that the plan submitted would be revised to indicate a maximum of three bedrooms for the upper dwelling unit. And that is the end of the staff report. The applicants are here and are wishing to present information about their application and are able to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I do have a question. Looking at this house from the Oregon side, the frontal view, I notice there's a car parked to the left of the driveway.
Yes.
And that cuts into the green space in front of this house. And is that in compliance? I mean, it seems to me that apparently the city has permitted this kind of parking. And my concern is that if other neighbors then wanted to park a car sort of on the edge there in what's designated green space, what happens to the neighborhood?
This space here that you see is actually paved. It's asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not green space.
Well, do they have enough front yardage space?
Their lot does meet the open space requirements, yes.
They still meet the open space requirements?
Yes. If you look in the application, that was provided and verified by staff. The open space ratio, the minimum, is 0.7, so that means 70% of their lot needs to be open space.
70% of the gross floor area.
Sorry, 70% of the gross floor area of the structure. Their open space ratio is actually .96, so they're providing more open space than is required against the development regulations.
There's something that whenever we discuss this neighborhood, I like to bring up in its history of zoning. I did look up, this house was built in 1908, and from my experience, this was built as a single-family house. And probably in 1940, it first showed up as being converted to a duplex. But it is my understanding that when the city took landlords to court about illegally converted uses in this neighborhood, it was because they were done illegally. And they had, many of them had to be returned unless they could prove that it was done before the zoning ordinance in 1951, that they were returned to single-family use. So I don't believe that this was legal when it was done. I mean, it's there, and because it was there before 1951, it was allowed to stay. But it was, there were no property record cards. Part of the information about what something was in 1953, 54, 55.
Correct.
Was what they were listed at. And at that time, I'm sure this one was listed as a duplex.
Right.
And so they were allowed to stay as a duplex. But the ones that were done, they had been converted back, and the city took people to court. Some, they found that were divided up into, you know, four, five units, they were able to prove that they had been a duplex.
Mm-hmm.
And they were forced to go back.
To a duplex?
Yes.
Right. And I do remember a case with Mr. Box where there was a lawsuit involved.
Yeah, there was one on Kohler and some street. It was a blue house. But, yeah, so this was built in 1908, and it was built as a single-family residence.
Okay.
It's very clear.
I am not going to naysay you on that.
No, that wouldn't be a good idea.
We, back in...
Yeah, it's just information.
Sure.
You know, it really doesn't matter here, but it's just, it's the history of this neighborhood that you have that creeping, landlords always want to make more apartments. And you have to put your foot down and hold them back. And the city's done a very good job with it because this neighborhood is very fragile. So I don't look at even expansion. You have to look at it very carefully to make sure that it doesn't increase the density.
Right.
Because it's not just the fact that it's a duplex and you could have more bedrooms legally. It's how much is the density increasing, and will it change the character of the neighborhood?
Right.
And so that's...
Thank you.
I'd also like to remind us, we're 2018, so...
Why not, Ed?
So, I mean, we can go back to like 1908, 1950, it's a different time, but...
Mr. Chair, I want to remind everyone that this is the time for questions of staff, not for discussion amongst the...
Well, she didn't have a question, so I just wanted to also state something of fact.
I do have a question for staff. In 1940, then, what would the rule have been about turning a single-family residence into a duplex? Would that have been something that would have had to be asked for permission by the city, or is that something that would have been allowed when this neighborhood wasn't R1 zone?
It was permitted by right, so you could construct a duplex, or you could have expanded or converted a single-family home into a duplex. I'm not sure what the building permit procedures were back then, but it was permitted by the zoning by right.
Okay. Thanks.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you. Does the applicant desire to be heard? In addition to me swearing you in before you all have to now sign in, thank you.
I'm a current resident living in the B unit with a couple other lifelong Urbanaites. And I'm also one of the owners of the home.
My name is Lance Schideman. I work in town at the university, at the Illinois Sustainable Technology Center, so I'm very attuned to sustainability concerns and do a lot of work in and around the Urbana area. And I want to introduce my wife, Leeson Schideman. We're both co-owners with our son of this property that he is living in while he's a college student.
So, just a little bit more about, oh, sure.
Just one thing before you get started. Just so it'll be clear for the record, I'd like you to speak one at a time, and I don't mean one and then the other. I mean, one person give their spiel.
And then stop.
And then the next one, and, yes.
Okay. They're just introducing, I'm going to do the spiel and then we'll stop.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So we've lived in Champaign-Urbana for about a total of 22 years. We have four kids, and the youngest is in fifth grade. When Luke was ready to live on his own at U of I, we made plans with him to purchase the home at Oregon for our personal use over probably at least the next 11 years, but also as a long-term investment beyond that. So we're here for the long term. The proposed plan is directly related with... The proposed plan is directly related with about how we would like to use the house now. And we feel it's a wise use of space and would help meet the current needs that we have currently. The big picture is that we have currently a four-bedroom duplex, considering the whole house. And we'd like to have permission to turn it into six bedrooms total. That would likely accommodate six people in the end. We currently have five people total living there, so we just wanted to point out that would be an increase of one person, likely. And that is two less than obviously the four-person and four-person limit that it could have. We're not asking for any variances or changes of zoning. As Marcus has already laid out, the planning department believes we meet all the criteria for approval. And we, it seems to us, the proposed project is aligned with the desire of many, not all, current WUNA residents. We've received a lot of positive feedback about our project itself and also our engagement with the community. Everyone has expressed their pleasure in the home transferring to a local accessible owner. Everybody on the WUNA listeners has all of our cell phone numbers and emails, so we are very approachable. We've listed out in detail a few more, I guess just details that you got in your handout about why we feel that this application should be approved. And thank you for listening to us this evening, and we're here to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Go on.
My question is about the finished attic and the, the sidewall height. So I imagine there is a.
Oh, like the knee walls on the outside?
Yes. And so high, so when you're drawing this floor plan here, how high are the sidewalls that are in the drawing?
The intended sidewall height, it will be between four feet and five feet. The, the roof has some different pitches, so there's some variation depending on where you're at in there. But we'd have a minimum of four feet and up to five feet in terms of the knee wall height.
And so when you figured, oh, excuse me. And so when you figured out the floor area, were you figuring it at five feet, at five feet or at four feet?
We figured it out as drawn, which is some of them are four feet, some of them are five feet, and some of them are in between the two because of the pitch of the roof.
Right.
And maintaining straight walls.
Okay. So when I'm looking at this, the front of the house has a small window. What is that? Is that, is that like eight feet?
The square footage of the.
No, right there. Is that like that?
Oh, the distance there?
Yeah.
From wall to wall?
There's a scale at the bottom of the drawing, which can help to approximate that distance. I would have to look at it a little closer.
It looks like it's a little less than 10 feet.
Mm-hmm.
And so these are essentially, so when it's, when it's two bedrooms, it's essentially then narrow and then long.
They are definitely, yeah, a unique shape.
Very narrow. And so you would, when you got to the corners where you could really have more.
Yes.
You know, pretty much here, you have to walk down the middle.
Yes.
And this is a little bigger, but so you have stuff mainly here because you, yeah.
Yeah. And that, I forgot to mention before, I'm a professional engineer by training. And so while I don't do residential development as my main activity, I'm somewhat familiar with development. The minimum, according to the International Building Code, is seven feet for the minimum dimension, and we meet that requirement. The, the dormer that we're providing over the stair area will also increase the height in the area of the dormer and that, so.
Okay. Okay.
Following up on that, how tall is the ceiling in the bathroom then?
So in the shower area, the ceiling height will be eight feet, which is where we're capping the, the ceiling could be taller because the roof height goes to about 16 feet. But we're going up to eight feet for the maximum roof height, or for the maximum ceiling height. And then in the areas near the edges, there'll be a slope from eight feet down to four or five feet, which the edge of the, the edges that are shown will all be at four feet with the exception of the shed dormer outline area, which will be at an eight feet all the way across.
So where the toilets at, the ceiling will be four feet?
The back of the toilet would be four feet, and near the front of the toilet, it would be about seven feet.
And I believe you submitted a letter in the correspondence where you said that if need be, you would go with one bedroom up there, if that was what was decided?
I mean, we, we do consider ourselves a part of the neighborhood, and if it was, we prefer to have two bedrooms by far. We feel that'll be the most use for our family as they go through and live there. But if it was, if it was helpful for neighborhood relations, then we would be willing to do one bedroom on the top floor.
But, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Matt.
I guess just to simplify the questioning, I guess any addition or improvement that you do will, I guess, conform to all building safety codes in the city.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any additional questions for the applicants? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard in favor of the application? To sign in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Claire Branigan, and I am the current tenant of the property. I'm on the first floor. My partner and I are graduate students, and we just started renting there. I just wanted, I felt compelled to make a statement of support because I, as the tenant, I think that they're great landlords. Something kind of my background, I actually have a background in tenant rights and organizing. So I would not go on record supporting basically any landlord, but I'm here because I do support them, and I think that they're great landlords. I've rented in Urbana for four years, and it's my fourth year renting here. And I've had experiences with the kind of landlords that I think that the neighborhood is trying to keep out. And I can say like full-heartedly that I do not believe that this is the situation that other neighbors are concerned about. And what else? I, yeah, I fully support the request to complete attic and to have a livable apartment and home for their son and also, who's also an owner, and his friends as well. So again, I just want to state my support. I understand neighborhoods' concerns, but the, our home has been a duplex, and it will continue to be a duplex. It's not going to change. So better to have good landlords than bad landlords. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be in favor? All right, I have to swear you in. Just come on up here. Why don't you sign in, and then I'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to register my support for.
Wait, sorry, you gotta announce your name and address.
Oh, Jonah Weiskopf.
I know who you are, but the record.
Um, what's that?
You gotta give an address.
Yeah.
Oh, then, all right. Go ahead.
I am a landlord in the area. I'm a realtor as well, and I help a lot of the student-based rent property all throughout West Urbana. I'm really in support of this project. I think it's an example. I wish we would see more of this. I support encouraging landlords to invest into their properties. By allowing these types of minor instances and exceptions, you encourage landlords to put money into their properties. That makes their properties safer. It makes students safer. It gets the city inside these properties so they can see what's going on. The city bumps into something that's, you know, out of code, they'll have to replace it. We'll know that this attic is code-compliant and built up to the appropriate safety standards. We have so many rental property that are not at the appropriate safety standards because there's such a disincentive to invest money into them because it's impossible to, it's very difficult to do that. You can see the amount of kind of fury that just this request entails. This is an attic. And I think it would be great to start to encourage landlords to put money in this way into their properties. As well, any improvement made through the city will raise the accessible tax base. They'll have to pull their permits, and that amount of money that they have to put into the project, their, their tax base will go up. So as a result, everybody, everybody's taxes in Urbana will go down by an incredibly minor amount. Less than a quarter of a penny. But it's interesting, I mean, if you don't try and encourage growth and development and accommodate an ever-increasing student body, you're going to strangle Urbana's ability as a city to grow. So as small as this is, as small as a quarter of a penny is, if you basically say no landlord is allowed to make any exception or put money into their property to improve and raise the, the standard of it in any way, you are missing an opportunity to grow the city. This is my opinion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard in favor of the application? All right, at this time, anyone opposed to the application? All right, you wish to be heard, I'll have to swear you in. That's all right. You swear or affirm any testimony you give to be true and accurate to the best of your ability?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name is Esther Pat. I live at 706 South, oh, is it on? There's a green light, does that mean it's? Oh, sign in, oh, I'm sorry. And I know that, and I sit and watch you ask everyone else to do it. And you never require our addresses? I know we're not, you cannot say it out loud, but you can't do it through the written record either? I mean, I don't want to, I was just curious, but you don't, okay. Well, thank you. Again, my name's Esther Pat. I live at 706 South Kohler Avenue, around the corner from 610 West Oregon. And I could sum up everything by just saying, I disagree strongly with what Jonah just said. And that's in fact, the reason you keep seeing people from WUNA at the Zoning Board of Appeals is because people who do think that the neighborhood's number-one goal should be to be developed are constantly trying to do things that compel us to come and speak about them. In this case, the petitioners argue that the change they propose is not significant. But it is. If it were not significant, they could just do it without a new conditional use permit. That's what triggers this case. The property at 610 West Oregon is currently a two-story duplex with a two-bedroom apartment on each floor. The proposed change is for it to be a three-story duplex with one four-bedroom and one two-bedroom unit. That's different, and it's significant. The petitioners and the city staff point out that changing the two-bedroom apartment to a four-bedroom doesn't increase the capacity because a two-bedroom, this two-bedroom is legally large enough to, for, to house four people. And that is totally true legally. In terms of the local housing market, that's totally untrue. Virtually all of the rentals in the campus area are rented, they aren't all rented on individual leases by the bedroom, but they are priced by the bedroom. Landlords often advertise their rental rates as X dollars per bedroom, even when they rent a house or an apartment that is on a joint lease, because the home market is a person, a bedroom, and a price. I've worked at the tenant union for more than 40 years, and I frequently look through rental housing advertisements, and I see this all the time. Even the petitioners themselves told the neighbors at that meeting on September 12th that they want to make the attic a livable space so their son can have a fourth person live there. He could have a fourth person live there right now, but then they'd have to share bedrooms, and they don't want to, which is why they want to make this bigger. It's rare in our housing market that any four unrelated adults live together in a two-bedroom. And it's been that way since 1980, when the four, two-bedroom, four-person apartments in one year just suddenly disappeared from the market. The West Urbana neighborhood has long been a target for people desiring to buy properties to lease to students, obviously. This increase, this increases population density. And when the population density on a block grows enough to be noticeable to home buyers, we start seeing more owner-occupied homes being purchased by, by people who want to use them for rentals rather than live in them. And that's the basic problem. The downtown-to-campus plan was adopted by the city council to preserve what was described as the single-family character of the neighborhood, drawing the lines for everything south of High Street and east of Bucy Avenue. The many legally non-conforming uses, I live in one of them, in that area provide a nice diversity if we preserve the existing stock of owner-occupied homes. No further increase in density in that area, south of High and east of Bucy, is necessary for that preservation. I disagree with the staff finding number four in your memo that the proposed change to the duplex, quote, "would not change the use of the property and therefore would not affect neighborhood traffic or the public convenience," end quote. While a change to this one property, or any one property, will not unsettle the whole balance in the neighborhood, it, this change will result in two more people and potentially two more cars at that location than in past years. And it will set a precedent for every other duplex owner with an unfinished attic who seeks to add space so they can add more tenants. The cumulative effect of these changes is why rental properties outnumber owner-occupied homes east of Bucy on the 700 blocks of High Street, Illinois Street, California, Oregon, and Nevada, and on the 600 blocks of the three streets north of Oregon. On Oregon right now, the 600 block, the subject property, is the only rental. And it'd be nice if it stayed that way. The fact that the petitioners start, oh, I urge you to deny this application. And I, I really think you should, mainly because of the precedent and, and the commitment to what is supposed to be preserving this neighborhood. If you're not going to deny it, I urge you to make a condition of approval that the three windows be added on the north side of the attic rather than the west side, so that the windows look down into the owner's owned property on their backyard rather than into the second-floor windows of 612 West Oregon. The fact that the petitioners started the work without a building permit and has already cut a hole in the west side of the attic should not influence your decision about whether to require that the windows be on the north side rather than the west side. Having a row of third-floor windows on the west side directly impacts the people who live at 612 West Oregon, and would diminish the desirability of their home, both while they are living there and when they one day try to sell it to an owner-occupant. Unfortunately, the owners of 612 West Oregon already had a vacation planned when this hearing was set, and they are not here tonight. And that's really the main reason I'm speaking and why I feel so strongly about this. This is, they live right next door, and this is affecting them. And they can't be here. As their neighbor, I support your addressing their very legitimate concerns about the impact of this project on their home, and I hope you really think about if you were the ones living at 612 West Oregon.
Anyone else want to be heard in opposition? Please come forward.
I think so. One and I.
I'm aware of that.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Sherman. I actually live at 513 West Oregon Street, which is essentially in that block. It's where Oregon, or Orchard Street dead ends. Your diagram is incorrect. My next-door neighbor is now a single-family home from, instead of an apartment building, and has been so for a number of years, so you may want to check that. Yep, you know, my, to the east of me, it is an apartment, but to the west of me on your diagram, it is not.
It might be simply difficult to tell. Is it only showing one?
It's, it's showing two, so you should check that. But this is another example where a multifamily home was actually converted back to a single-family home, which is the whole purpose of having my block be an R2-designated zone. And repeatedly, we, I've lived in this neighborhood for over 10 years, close to 15 years, and we, I have seen over and over again how people will purchase homes that are zoned specifically, and then they will decide to try to change the zoning to meet what they really want the property to eventually become, whether it's an apartment, an apartment building, like we saw on Lincoln, with the four houses that were recently changed into apartment buildings, and where they wanted it to actually be a five-story apartment building, which was completely unacceptable for zoning. So this is not. So this is not the case of the Schneidermans, and I really do appreciate them reaching out to the community and trying to work with us and to understand that. I didn't have a chance to go to their gathering, but I do have concerns. The zoning is there for a reason, and even though that zoning was put in place in the early 80s, it's still relevant today, and the issues that were existing then still have an effect and are still a big problem. 1908, but, or 1940, or 1982, this is 2018, and it's still a problem. We still have encroachment. If you looked back in the 80s, or maybe if you looked in the 1940s, the two blocks that are west of my, of the 600 block, those are most likely more owner-occupied than they are now, but they are mostly, they have a high rate of rental now as a result because the zoning was not being respected. So I applaud them for wanting to enhance the property, but I do not support, and I ask you to, I do not support them doing, support this change, and I ask that you keep the zoning as it is designated for this particular property. I also want to highlight that my house, which is just within, across the street and a couple of houses down, was a dup, converted to a duplex or boarding, duplex boarding house combination in the 1960s, and in the 80s it was converted back, and it's now a single-family home. So this concept of why is that designation there? Well, it's because the intent of that part of the neighborhood is to actually be a single-family home. And it's not just because it's a duplex now, it really does not mean that it'll stay that. There's a chance it will, but there are many houses even within that zone that have actually gone back. So I ask that you please respect the existing zoning and you deny it. If you do decide to go forward with it, I ask that you restrict it to three bedrooms in the upper apartment, because I don't think it's appropriate. There was talking about parking permits for my street, my section of the street. Well, you know, you may have a parking permit, but you could also, we had the problem where someone else from a block down or two blocks down could still park on my street, my section of the street. So you can't say, oh, well, that block only has one. Actually, you have to look at the neighborhood and the surrounding area and see how many parking permits there are for on-street parking, and that's relevant, because that will impact. And the more that we allow, I think the precedent is also a big concern of mine. So I do ask that you restrict it if you do approve it, but I ask that you really, that you deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard in opposition? Please come forward. And I believe you'll need to be sworn.
Yes. It's correct.
Do you swear affirm any testimony you give here during night would be true and accurate to the best of your ability?
I do so.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Hunter, and my husband and I have lived at 510 West Oregon, which is just one block from the subject property for the past 40 years. Our house was a single-family rental for the 20-plus years prior to that and was in terrible shape. And over the years, we have spent time and money to make it into a home, which is an asset to the neighborhood. Over those years, we've been pleased that many other properties nearby have been bought and have been similarly updated and improved. In fact, two properties on Oregon have been converted from multi-unit apartments back to single-family. One of them I lived in at 508, and the other one is 601, which is next door to Leslie. We hope that everyone here understands that the opposition to this application is based on the stated goals of longstanding city planning documents such as the downtown-to-campus plan of 1990. In particular, this document stated that the intent was to minimize non-conforming uses in the R2 area. Our current zoning ordinance should be utilized to achieve those stated goals by protecting the low-density nature of this vulnerable West Urbana neighborhood. Most neighborhood homeowners that I spoke to over the past several weeks expressed their concern about this request, which was, would essentially enable higher-density residential use for the property. Although it was grandfathered in as a duplex use, it has not been rented to the maximum number of occupants, which would be a total of eight for the building over the years. That was because, as Esther mentioned, each unit only has two bedrooms. That limited the number of tenants effectively. The current owners' assurances that they intend to maintain the property and to allow fewer than the maximum number of tenants are well-intentioned, but they're not binding. You can say anything you want, but it's not binding. If the permit is granted, the change would become permanent, and this is very important. The current owners are going to do very nice things to this property, we're being told, but future owners might not, and they might not adhere to any of the promised density cars or whatever. The likelihood of this seems to me to be very strong because of the profit motive for rental properties. Additionally, that the son of the current owners is an occupant doesn't change those facts. The facts are, there's a certain number of people living there, although we appreciate having somebody on the property who cares. I have noticed throughout this process that the scope and size of the proposed construction has been minimized. It's a major project, which adds one or two bedrooms and a second bathroom in an undeveloped attic space. The various scenarios which have been considered have tossed around different numbers of square footage and so on. It sounds like it's kind of settled on 550, but that's actually almost a 50% increase over the current square footage of that second-floor unit. The owners say that they're only making use of the available space. That's not quite true, because that space technically, legally, right now is not available, and that use is limited to the first and second floors currently. It's the responsibility of anyone who buys a property in any community to be sure they understand the zoning for that property and that they apply for the required permits before hiring contractors, certainly before commencing work. In late July, construction began but was stopped because of the lack of permits. The details of this project have been presented variously over the past two months. Some text and diagrams talked about bedrooms or living space and sometimes recreation. I think everybody is a little confused about exactly what the intended purpose of that space is. The residents of this vulnerable area have worked hard over the years to make sure that the intent of the planning documents and the applicable zoning regulations are upheld. The conditional use application process includes a mechanism for residents to protest requests such as this one, which affect the use of currently non-conforming properties. Unfortunately, Kohler, which is the dividing line between 600 and 700 blocks, it's a dividing line between major single-family use to the east and rental multi-unit use to the west. Consequently, with only 10 days, we were unable to even contact the majority of the property owners on the map that was sent out, which would be those property owners who could sign a protest document. We got 18 out of the needed 26. Some people weren't home, a lot of people don't live in Urbana, a lot of people don't live in Illinois, some people live in California. There was no way we could contact people and try to complete that protest petition. Have it here. There is a mistaken impression that a yes vote will increase the property tax collected for the city of Urbana. Keep in mind that for a $100 increase in taxes paid, Urbana would only get 15 of that or so. And in order to generate a $100 increase in total taxes, the assessment for a given property would have to increase by $935. That's my calculation, might be a little off. Furthermore, only one-third of the market value of a property is taxed, so, you know, you make improvements, they may or may not increase. Some improvements do increase the assessment and others do not. So I think talking about approving a request like this because Urbana's going to suddenly be sitting, you know, at the end of the rainbow, that's really not a very, so you can't justify approving it based on that. You only need to survey the streets in the northern portion of the West Urbana neighborhood to understand that rental property occupancy isn't an all-time low. There are, there are rent signs everywhere. One month after the start of the semester, and there are still dozens of units, I bicycle all over, I see them, these are not rented. So does this indicate a declining interest in this type of housing? Or is it an unwillingness because some of those properties are substandard and there's better housing elsewhere? But in either case, it should clue us all into the fact that we have enough rental capacity in our neighborhood. There's a lot of places unoccupied, so we need to make efforts to hold the line and not allow increased occupancy. Esther talked about the layout of the proposed project. I think that the shed dormer with the large bank of windows has no architectural significance for that building or for the general neighborhood. The distance between those, that property, that house and the, and 612 is maybe 15 to 20 feet. It's a driveway plus, it's not that much. It's more than that. Nonetheless, it is quite obtrusive overlooking the small backyard that those neighbors own. It would certainly be, if this has to happen, to put those windows on the north side, where the only area impacted is the backyard of that property. That would, that would be wonderful. In addition, I think limiting it to a single room upstairs would be the way to go. I've been in touch with Beth Darling, she lives at 612, and she couldn't be here tonight, but she said that the points I've made here basically reflect her concerns. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And anybody have questions?
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Come forward, and I believe you need to be sworn in as well.
Were you here? No.
I was.
You weren't in, go ahead.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jo Kibbe, and I live directly across from the house. And I have to say, I'm doing this like, with a very, very heavy heart, because I truly appreciate the outreach that the Schneidermans have done. And I, I think they will be great neighbors, and already they've made improvements in the house. But I've lived in my house since 1985. My husband and I put a lot of work and sweat equity into our house, and when I walk up to campus on the next block, which changed significantly since we moved there in 1985, so when I walk from the 600 block of Oregon to the 700 block of Oregon, it's like entering a different zone altogether. I, the litter, the garbage, well, I don't have to tell you what it's like in some of the neighborhoods where student rentals predominate. And we're just one block away, and our, our particular block is especially fragile because there are multiple houses for sale right now, and they're, they're large houses and they're old houses. And, you know, they're not, they're not turning over quickly. We don't want a precedent set where somebody could buy those houses and then, and then appeal to the city for the same reasons, oh, well, you know, the city needs to develop. What if we put more people in, you know, nobody else is buying this house? Can we legitimately change, you know, rezone it? There, and there are several elderly people in the neighborhood who probably will need to move in a few years. So it is an especially fragile block for, you know, for any irrevocable decision on one of the houses, and particularly one that would set a precedent. But as I said, you know, it's a very heavy heart that I do this, because we've lived across from that house since we moved in, and, you know, the other landlords were absolutely reprehensible, so I could tell stories, but I won't. So we're, you know, we're thrilled that responsible people bought it, but I, for me, my worry is precedent and the next block. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hello, my name's Jim May. I'm a lifelong Urbana resident. I grew up right behind the fire station. I've worked in that neighborhood since I was 10 years old. I own a property on West California. You actually are losing three blocks of West Urbana neighborhood from, if you really want to think of it, from Main Street to Washington. Those houses are so torn down that there's really no way anyone could buy them and fix them up if they want to, if they're a young couple with children. So basically, our boundary line right now is Kohler. I've worked for some of you on this panel before. A lot of the ladies spoke, Miss Pat and Katie. I've tried to do a lot, as best I can, to help people in that neighborhood. But I think we've got a possible, an encroachment on another block, and it just seems that it needs to stop somewhere. You know, if, I think nothing was brought up about the safety issue. Are they going to have to put an outside stairway off the third floor? What if there's a fire on the second floor? How are the tenants going to get out on the top floor? Are they going to put a sprinkler system in? What, what's the safety issue of that house? Nothing was brought up about that. I don't know if you know or not. I'm just, I've never spoke to this before, because I've never really felt that I needed to, but now is the time that I feel this needs to stop. I'd rather have to see kids walking east than west. Are we going to bus all the little kids that go to Lille School that don't even live in that neighborhood anymore because there's no families? I feel if we lose children in that neighborhood, we don't have a neighborhood. We've got enough tenants that go to the U of I and they all want to live in that neighborhood. But at some point, we need to have children in our neighborhood again and be able to have a single-family homes. There's three houses for sale on that block right now. So, you know, the Barclay House, what if they come to you and say they want to redo the third floor of that house? You know, there's another family that just, Chris and Tony moved out, and their house is for sale. So you've got really three other houses on that same block for sale. So I'm always, always appreciative of someone that wants to help fix a place up, but this isn't the thing to do. That was a single-family home at one time, and they made it a duplex. It could be turned back into a single-family home if someone bought it and did what Trent Shepherd did to the house that's on Oregon. He took a rental out and made a single-family home with children in it. So what I'm, what I'm asking you, I want, I want to really know if, are you loyal to Urbana? If you're loyal to Urbana, you'll, you'll understand what I'm talking about. And there's, there's a point where you need to think about the people that already live in this neighborhood, that have lived there so long, that are Urbana, not someone that's coming in, buying a house, maybe in five or six years after your children are graduated. in, buying a house, maybe in five or six years after your children are graduated, are gonna turn around and sell it. And that's basically what I have to say to you.
Just in response to one thing that you brought up, any renovation that is being undertaken has to apply, or, excuse me, conform with other codes. So, some of the things you said that weren't specifically addressed were not in any detail, but it was in the city's presentation that it would have to comply, so...
Well, I wish there was a city inspector here tonight because why didn't they approach the city for a permit?
I can't answer specific questions. I just addressed, no, I addressed your comment that we are doing this without being cognizant of other codes. It would have to apply, so we're not the enforcement.
You know, just two weeks ago, the fire department walked the neighborhood. They go to everybody's house, and they asked if they could come in and see if you have smoke detectors or GFI's in the bathroom in the kitchen. You know, you're pretty active about that, you know, you do a good job. I don't know because they've come to my place several times.
I just wanted to address...
I understand, but I'm, I just feel like you've already lost three blocks from Lincoln to Kohler already. I don't see how you're gonna reverse it. And maybe Chris Saunders can buy them all up and tear them down and build apartment buildings.
Anybody else in opposition? Does the applicant have any response to... Come back.
We'll try to be as brief as we can.
Thank you.
But just going through quickly, some of the things that Jonah had brought up, I know didn't sit as well, but we're not trying to bring in big new apartment development. We're not commenting on that. We're investing in a historical home that's already there. To the comment that there'll be a lot of other people that will want to do what we're doing, there's very few duplexes in the area. I don't, I can't speak to how many of them even have an attic that would be proper to finish off. And would those people be very anxious to go through the process that we have to make that happen? So, I guess to the point that a lot of people are gonna want to do it, I don't think there's even the houses, the duplexes there that would, the numbers aren't even there, there'd be a lot. As far as the windows facing our neighbor, the Darling, Beth Darling, I also have had some communication with her. I, no doubt that in her dream, that wasn't her ideal, but we went back and forth, and I've shared with her all along the way what we were doing. And just a couple nights ago, we mentioned things like, let's really take a look at the angle of the windows, the windows will be where there's stairs, we want to make sure that's not looking into your property. We talked about mottled glass, you know, like, so glass you couldn't actually see through would let light in, but not actually, so we are in communication with little details like that. We spoke with another one of our neighbors who came to us, approached us about fixing some lights on the outside that would be more conducive to him enjoying his backyard, and that's in our plan. So, we are very sensitive to little details that might be affected by other people. I believe Marcus can speak on this too. We're not asking for a change of zoning, correct? As far as encroachment, two things that popped into my mind was, one, encroachment sounds more like we're, we want to flip single-family houses to multifamily houses and to apartment buildings, but we're not asking to change our designation. And it also makes me think of the fact that there are some poor landlords and renters in the neighborhood. And a lot of feedback we've gotten from people through the listserv and conversations is, let's focus on those problems and really try to toe the line in fixing those problems, not just imagining that our one more tenant is gonna be the cause of more of those problems. As far as the parking goes, I think we would all agree that the likely outcome is that we would have six people living there. There's ample parking where we live, and my husband can speak to that a little bit better, but there's definitely room for six cars there, so they wouldn't spill out into the street or anything. As far as children, if we want children in the neighborhood, they probably most likely can't afford a really large, single-family home that's for sale, but they might be able to live in an apartment or a duplex that has four bedrooms. Oh, and then we, as far as safety, that was also brought up, just a small example, the city inspectors have been through our house a few times. We've been, we've approached them months and months ago. I even talked to them, you know, right when we were buying the house, about questions in detail. So, we have been involved in talking to the city and trying to get information. But one example of safety is they, you know, they said, well, if you do this project, every house is gonna need wired-in smoke detectors, and you're gonna have to change this, this, and this. So, just by us doing the project, we'll actually increase the safety of the whole house, not just the attic space, but also the tenants that currently live there. Lance, do you have anything to add? No, I said, do you have anything to add?
I mean, there's lots of comments that I could make, and I would be happy to speak with any of the residents afterwards. I don't think I'll go through the point-by-point, my wife covered many of them. I think I'd like to just cast a slightly different vision. So, we've been given a vision that's fairly bleak about what will happen if you allow us to go forward with the plan. We personally lived in a house here in Champaign as graduate students. We owned that home, and we now rent it out to other people that are typically in the same situation. We were as graduate students or as young professionals. And we sort of see this as a stepping stone whereby our son would do the same kind of thing, that we actually see that he will be involved in the neighborhood very long after even we are dead and gone. And the evidence that I can provide very specific to that is our own case, that's exactly what, exactly what we did. And there are many other cases where people that, you know, we work with that have basically done the same thing, gotten a place while they were a student and then continued to stay there. We are, in many ways, exactly the opposite of the things that the residents are concerned about. We are not an absentee landlord. We actually grew up in the suburbs of Chicago. We came to Champaign as students. We decided to stay in Champaign. When I got done with my PhD, we have five degrees between the two of us at the University of Illinois, we had offers to go live back in Chicago where we came from. We decided to raise our families here in Champaign. And so, there's really not any chance that we're moving away. In fact, I just helped my mother and father put a bid in a house here in Urbana, and so our plans are to stay here for the long haul. I have never sold a house that we lived in. I have no intention of selling a house that we lived in. It will go to Luke, and that's why he's with us as an owner. So, anyway, so I'd like to just paint that very different picture of somebody that's come into the neighborhood, has students, grown up with the neighborhood. We will stay involved. We have no intention of fulfilling any of the negative portrayals that have been put forth here today. We actually hope to actually stem that tide and be a part of the solution that provides an alternative. We had several people raise an issue with houses for sale. If we did not buy this house in January, there would be one more house for sale on this very delicate block. And so, we think that our participation, our partnership with the neighborhood is something that actually casts a very positive vision going forward, and we look forward to, we, in the end, we all have the same goal, to have a great neighborhood in the West Urbana area. We have differences about how do we achieve that, but we're happy to work with the residents that are here, and we will work alongside them on things that we agree on, on things that we disagree on, to make the neighborhood a better place. And we hope, of course, that you vote in favor of our application. But we're here for the long haul, and we're gonna be ready to work with you, the residents, the city, in order to make this a good situation for everybody involved.
Thank you, yes.
For the owners, when you bought the house, what was the condition of the attic, and how accessible was it?
So, the attic had a set of existing stairs that go up to it, and it had floors in it, and basically exposed roofing panels all the way around. So, it was basically your typical unfinished attic with a floor, you could store stuff up there. And when we looked at it, we thought, that's great. We actually talked to the city about expanding into the attic even before we bought the place. That was our stated intention from the beginning. The city has been great to work with. I give them a significant pat on the back all across, all along the way. We've learned some things, but we're happy to have done that. I would also point out that when we, you know, it was mentioned that we didn't get a permit, we've only done demolition, and you don't need a permit to do demolition. Me and my son, in the attic, pulled out the floorboards in order to prepare the way for these improvements, which was, you know, all done before this conditional use permit process. But we've been, in no way been trying to hide anything, sneak it on in the background. We are there from the beginning, even before we bought it, trying to engage the city in our project and make sure that everything is done. These are our children who are going to live in this place. Everything will be as safe as it would be in our own home that we've had from the beginning.
Right. And it has been a learning curve. We've learned a lot over the last year, so some things will start and stop along the way, but we have been open, we've learned as we've been forthcoming about what we wanted to do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. When you look at the facade of your house, it looks like part of the porch was taken out to make a room. Is that right?
Originally in 1908, I imagine the porch went... We almost wonder if the house was maybe originally built to face to the east possibly? We haven't changed anything, and we don't know, we didn't, yeah.
But here's my point. I think there will be other people in the neighborhood who have a porch, they want to enclose it, they want to make it an extra bedroom, and then you end up with a line of houses that lose that front facade, they lose the charm, and over time, that contributes, I think, to the decay of the neighborhood.
As an engineer, having been in the house, I think that it's an original living room. It does not add a bedroom, it actually adds to the living room space. And of course, nobody knows exactly what was there way back when, but we are certainly planning on making no changes to that. It's there, and so, we're not proposing to make any...
Yeah, and Luke loves his open porch, but even if we wanted to enclose his, that wouldn't be allowed unless we met this whole process again, and that's not our intention.
That's so common in this neighborhood, that's, my house has what used to be an open porch, that's now my wife's office.
Right, but I mean, I think over time, if enough people do that, you lose the character and you lose the ambience of the neighborhood and...
No, it's in our best interest to keep the ambience of the street and our house. We want to be the nice place you want to come live and enjoy the character that's already there, so we definitely want to preserve it.
Go ahead, Joanne.
This is just a comment. On the WUNA list, someone posted a picture from the Sanborn map. They're in the library, and what they, on the Sanborn maps, they actually drew pictures of the houses. And so, if you look at them, you can see the outline of your house. And I'm pretty sure that when I looked at the outline of this house, it was a circular porch. And at that extent, the end of that room, where that big glass window is, lasts like five feet, were part of the porch. So, that was, on the WUNA list, somewhere there's somebody put in a Sanborn map.
Anyone else wishing to be heard from the board?
Matt, anything to say?
Well, no, I had, I had a comment. I appreciate the concerns of those who spoke in opposition, but I think the big problem here in this neighborhood is not individual projects of people like the petitioners here, but your big giant neighbor to the west, whose campus and other footprint constantly changes, and that has residual spillover effect into neighborhoods. And the closer you are to the giant, the bigger problems you have. On a personal note, my mother-in-law and father-in-law lived in the northern part of Urbana below University Avenue on Goodwin, up against the campus of the University of Illinois. And what happened to them was eminent domain by the University of Illinois. And my father-in-law was dead by then, but my mother-in-law lost her house because of the demographic changes in the area. And they were not as organized as WUNA, but people tried to hold on and resist what became somewhat the inevitable movement north of the campus area and apartments, and just massive changes took place. It was mentioned that the homes on Main Street, the very nice and stately and elegant homes there, well, at one time, that was the edge of Urbana where your more well-to-do citizens lived. The University of Illinois was a lot further to the west. As the university and the campus town area and the residential areas moved east, and to a certain extent, the city also moved west, there again became a collision. And certainly, everything should be done to preserve neighborhoods. But sometimes I feel like people lose sight of progress, or maybe you don't call it that, just change. And I think because of your giant neighbor, and I'm the West Urbana WUNA, I live farther to the west though, or, excuse me, to the east of this area, so we don't have these problems yet. I live in the 300 block of Vermont. But what I was gonna say, and then I will stop, is that forty-some years ago, this area of campus was, or, excuse me, of Urbana was a lot more desirable for incoming families because you didn't have the area south of Yankee Ridge out there developed. You didn't have the area west, excuse me, east of, behind Meyer and back in there. There are residential areas, unfortunately, I think, that are a lot more attractive, and that's what I think leads to these non-owner occupied residences and buildings in these As I said, maybe progress is the wrong word, but things happen. And sometimes it's inevitable, the negative consequences of those changes. And hope as we all might, I dare say that forty years from now, this area of Urbana will look entirely different than it looks now. And that's all I would like to say, just a comment.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
There was a period when I was the assessor that I kept track of every year of the turnover, if a house went from owner occupied to non-owner occupied, and the reverse. And what I found over a period, I think I did it over a period of five years, that it was, it kind of broke even. But, you know, that has to do with, you know, people moving in and taking care of their properties. And I don't know what's gonna happen in the future, and I haven't been doing that for a while, but between like 2000 and 2010, it was pretty much break even. You know, there would be a rental home, and then somebody would... You know, there would be a rental home, and then somebody would come in and buy it, and it would become owner-occupied. So that's my comment.
I guess I'll make a comment, too. I know Dr. Scheidman from the university, worked on a similar project and class. I feel like I've gotten to know you a little bit more tonight, hearing your story. And I'll admit some of my biases. I'm very sensitive to discriminatory comments against students. I came to this town as a graduate student. I was one of those graduate students who rented as a, my first home, and I rented for several years, and then I bought. And then my, I now live in my second home that I own with my wife now, and we're raising our family because we want to be in this neighborhood. We want to live in this neighborhood. Now, behind my house, there's a rental home. The owner is someone who lives in Champaign County, wonderful, wonderful people. And the downstairs apartment of this unit, it's, I think it's actually three units in this particular house, but one of them is a young family with a young child. I can't help but imagine that part of the reason why they're renting that property is because they want to be in the neighborhood with Leo School. So I think that it's not a bad thing that we have rentals in this neighborhood. I think that the fact that we have an owner-occupied rental is wonderful. My first home that I lived in, that I owned, I rented out some of the rooms to fellow graduate students. And anytime that somebody wants to come in and put money into a house in Urbana, I'm very interested in seeing that happen. Obviously, we have to look at the circumstances. The circumstances here are, this has been a duplex since at least 1940. It will continue to be a duplex by right, whether we think that people want to live in what amount of bedrooms they do or not. By right, there could be four people in the downstairs half of duplex and four people in the upstairs half. That's four unrelated people. There could be a family of six that lives in either one of them. They could go up to the attic without it being finished. The first house that I rented had an upstairs attic that had a lock on it. I will neither confirm nor deny that I got out my screwdriver and removed the hardware to see up in that attic and notice that it's a perfectly fine attic, even though it was not completely finished and legally occupiable, that somebody could possibly sit up there and maybe take a couch up there. Of course, I can't say for sure. I'm just speculating. So that's the kind of homes that are already in Urbana. And the fact that we have somebody coming in who wants to bring this home into good coding, proper, the proper zoning, and put a lot of money into it to make it safe speaks very highly, I think.
Thank you. No one else, then we're ready, I think, to call this for a motion? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, they can go sit down, yeah. You have questions, understand? Yeah, go ahead.
The precedent for duplexes that was discussed, if somebody bought one of these single-family homes on this block and they wanted to make it a duplex, they would have to come to this board, and we would review the facts of that case solely on the merits of that particular case and make a decision. And I can't speak for everyone on this board, but I think we look very seriously in a different direction than what we're potentially looking here in this particular case. Because as I look at the, you know, this says that it's a request for a conditional use permit, but to me, it's not that. It's a request to go from non-conforming to conforming. So the issue here is, this is going to be a duplex, okay? That's it. Do we want it to be legal and get these improvements or not? And then what kind of conditions do you want to put on that?
All right. I believe at this time, then, there's no further comment from the board. We're ready to have this called for a vote. Motion, yes.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we take case ZB A 2018 C-06 to grant the conditional use, along with any additional conditions and requirements as appropriate. Specifically, one, modifications to existing structure generally conform with the building plan and elevation in Exhibit D entitled 610 West Oregon Proposed Third Floor Plan and Primary West Elevations submitted with this application. Two, the new structure conforms with all applicable zoning and building safety codes in the city. And three, modifications to the existing structure generally conform with the building plan and elevation in Exhibit D titled 610 West Oregon Proposed Third Floor Plan and Primary West Elevations submitted with this application and revised to indicate a maximum of three bedrooms for the upper dwelling unit. Was that a natural condition added on there? Or was that a combined condition?
That was a potential combined condition if you wanted to limit the number of bedrooms.
I retract number three and just keep one and two.
All right. You got that, then? Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
I believe then we're ready to call this for a vote.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
No.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
That motion carries, and being a conditional use permit, it needs no further action, correct? All right. Thank you to all. Is there any old business?
No.
Any new business?
No.
Yes.
If there's a way that we could limit people asking to put additional parking in their front yard, because as the density increases, more people want to do this, and I think it hurts the neighborhood, just like having this extra car parked on the side of the driveway when you look at the front of this house. If more people... Is there any zoning that permits or prohibits this?
There is. If it suits the board, we'll write up a little something and email it to you all, just to make sure we get all of the different points, because there's different sections that address parking in the front yard, if that is your concern.
Yeah.
Right, and I just, is it enforced?
That's a good question.
It's hard to...
I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, I would like to, you know, maybe discuss at the next meeting exactly what it is and how to protect a place like Oregon Street from other people.
I'm sorry, I can't hear the board, nor will we be able to take minutes due to the extra noise.
Hold on. Go out, please.
Shame on you.
Yeah, shame on us, not...
I'm not protecting my property values, and I have every right to protect them.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
And anyway, that's my question. And how do we, in that, well, in all the areas of Urbana, protect that from happening, even if they're in compliance with the number of square feet in the front?
We'll get that section for you. There is a section about parking in the front yard, and we'll get you the exact language.
Yeah, maybe we need to look at that, because if you do it enough, enough homes, you hurt the character.
I have a question, too. Like, one, I know zoning is, the zoning ordinance is very detailed. At what point does it get updated to somewhat streamline a lot of this confusion and history and, I don't know, it just seems like there's a lot of stuff that needs to be cleaned up?
Well, we try to do small cleanups every year or so. We generally group those together. And then if there's larger things, we take them as individual cases, larger, more substantial items that we need to have a discussion about versus little cleanup things that would make things smoother. So we don't have a major rewrite in our work plan anytime real soon, but we do regularly try to clean up little things. Yes, there's a lot more to do, no doubt.
Would it be beneficial for, coming from the board, to say that it would be helpful to advocate for a cleanup at one point in the far future?
I mean, if you have specific things that you have difficulty with, we'd be happy to add that to our very long list, to be honest with you. It's just a matter of staffing and trying to fit it in with all of the other cases and other priorities of the city. So as you can imagine, one that administers this document, we are very interested in making it easier to understand for everyone. If we were able to snap our fingers and make it be done overnight, I think we would all rejoice in that, but that is not the reality, unfortunately.
You know, and I just comment, it appears that the new owners had contact with the city prior to even buying and were perhaps under the assumption that there would be no problem with completing the attic and adding two more bedrooms and a bathroom?
I wasn't involved in those discussions, nor do I think anyone in zoning was involved in those discussions, so I believe those discussions revolved just around building code, so...
So should they have, at that point, sort of involved zoning so that...
One doesn't always know that one should involve zoning.
I see.
So, I mean, it's, I think it's just an unfortunate situation. In a perfect world, it would have been, hey, yeah, let's talk about zoning. But I don't think that happened in this case, and we just have to deal with it.
I think it's reasonable that if this had been a, if this had already been a conforming duplex, it wouldn't have been an issue.
Right.
It's only because it was a non-conforming duplex that it became an issue.
But they all are there.
What's that?
They all are there.
Well, not anymore. This one just became conditional use permit.
There are many like this.
And just for the young people on the board, I mean, you remember that after World War II, 1945, there was a tremendous shortage of housing. So at that point, many of the single-family homes, which were large, were converted and made into duplexes, triplexes, what have you, and we sort of live with the aftermath of that.
Yeah, that big white house on the corner of Bu... Now, Coller and Great Street was a surplus center.
Yes.
There are cases.
I'm on the 200 block of California, and I'm on the side where my backyard is, all the houses along Illinois, it's very obvious, all the California houses are single-family. All the Illinois houses, I think there's one single family, and the rest are, yeah, apartment...
Duplexes, triplexes, whatever.
Tri-quad, some of them.
Yes.
Thirty-some years ago, most of those were single-family.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's sea change that goes on in that area.
But, like I said, I'm real, I was really encouraged when, shortly after my wife and I bought our house, the house behind us was purchased, and that gentleman's put a lot of money into the house, and he said that, and his sons lived upstairs, and he said, basically, his plan is that when he and his wife can't live out in the country anymore, they're going to move into town and live there. So, you know, I think this, like you said, it's the natural cycles, right?
Yeah, it comes and goes, but as I said, that area of thirty-some years ago was a lot different than it is now, and it's just, it's unfortunate. Is there staff report?
No, sir.
Study session?
No.
Then we are adjourned.